I'll be march meeting of the U S D three fifty board of education that order. Any additions or changes to the agenda?
I have none.
Mr. President, I move that the board approved the consent agenda as presented.
Sorry. It's been moved in second and that we approve the consent agenda as presented or approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same side. Motion carried. Consent agenda.
I have nothing unusual to report on the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved in second that we approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried. All right. Patron comments. Okay. Business items, calendar.
This is our second look at the school calendar for approval. We're making an assumption that things are going to be pretty much back to normal next fall. Even if we do have some adjustments to make next fall, I think we can work with this calendar for sure. Similar structure to what we've had in the past, pre-COVID. So this is the calendar that the teachers' calendar committee and district leadership team, everybody had some feedback, a chance to provide feedback on, so.
Any concerns? Okay. Again, a motion to approve.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two calendar as presented.
Sorry. It's been moved in second that we approve the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two calendar as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same side. Motion carried. Vehicle fleet update.
Page fifteen of your documents there shows our vehicle fleet information. We have five buses that are used for student transportation, seven passenger vehicles, van Suburbans. One of those is a handicap accessible wheelchair conversion van, and then we have an old maintenance bus, and then the maintenance pickup. So on our rotation out to the right, we've got some notes on when we anticipated replacing those. We'd hope to replace a bus this summer or this year, but we delayed that a year, so we really need to make that happen this summer. Bus number one is not in great shape. Bus number eight is on its last leg. We've used it for cross-country practice and then just as a backup route bus. So number one would become our backup bus and then have a new route bus, similar size, fifty-three passenger. Then our passenger vehicles, we need to postpone those just by a year from what our anticipated replacement is. I think we've got major expense with our library roof coming up, and we delayed the bus purchase for our rooftop units to make sure we can get rolling on that project this past summer. So that's the reason for some of the delay. So any questions on that?
Josh, is it possible to use any of the federal funds that we're going to be getting for buses?
Likely no. That question's been asked. It really doesn't help address the situation with the pandemic. Argument could be made that we need to separate, you know, have more bus routes, but we don't have enough people to run more buses, so K S D's been pretty clear that that's likely not allowable expense.
On that Suburban and the caravan, on them two are delayed. What kind of mileage do you anticipate for this year?
Roughly the same as what we've had, so the number thirty-two, I'd have to go back and look for sure, twelve thousand miles a year, twelve to fifteen. And then thirty-three, that van, it doesn't get many miles on it because we run that around town for the most part for stretch led activities. And then thirty-five, that doesn't get a lot of use because nobody likes to drive it.
Have we ever considered instead of a Suburban, buying a bigger van?
Twelve and fifteen passenger vans are illegal for student transportation, but ten passenger vans are allowed. You can't get above, you know, twelve passengers. Yeah, some have gone with those Ford Transits. They're ugly as sin, but hold a few more kids.
But that's illegal?
Ten passengers, no.
But so what do them vans hold, ten?
Yeah, they can hold ten. They have, they make bigger ones, just for public schools we can't, you know, colleges, you see them all the time with the twelve or fifteen passenger.
Any idea how the cost of those compares to a Suburban?
I don't.
Jeepers.
A salesman told me he just sold a used one at twenty thousand miles for twenty-five thousand dollars.
Really? But ultimately, we get the vehicles at basically at cost on the state bid list, and if you run them for a couple of years and sell them, I think we could almost run fleet for free, but then you risk, and we have to sell it. Somebody has to do that legwork, but that's kind of been in the back of my mind as something to try to do. But we'll definitely bring that to the table when we replace that Suburban and maybe look at a different type of vehicle.
So what's wrong with that Ford Expedition that no one wants to drive? That's got forty-five thousand.
We've had good luck with the Suburbans on the state bid list. They're not completely stripped down, but for whatever reason that we, when we got that Expedition on the state bid list, it was just, it's terribly stripped down. There's no console in the middle. There's, it's, you know, plastic floor, rubber floor, and no running board, so it's hard to get in and out of. It's in good shape, runs great.
Any other questions, concerns? Okay. Thanks, Jeff. Coronavirus relief funds.
On page sixteen, you see the second round of our, well, I say second round of funds. We've had our federal funds through Esser, E S S E R. I can't tell you what that stands for now, but this is, we've had a first round where we got forty-eight thousand. We've, we've pretty much used that up. We haven't expensed it all, but we've, we've spent it. And then we have the Spark funds that came through the county in the amount of about a hundred and eighty thousand. Technology masks, sanitizing machines, all those things we had to throw together right here to get school open, some personnel costs for the first half of the year, extra food service costs, funds are going to that. So those, those funds are pretty much spent. Now, the second round of the Esser funds, I just showed our county on here. This is distributed through the title funding formula, which is based on the number of at-risk kids you have, your at-risk student population. So we're set to get about two hundred and twelve thousand dollars here. I think it will be available this month. And that's to address anything with the pandemic. We've kind of talked through some of this already. Then there will be a third round. The second round, we have until the end of, until September of twenty-three to spend that, that fund, those funds. So basically, next year and the following year, we'll have those funds available to spend to address anything with the pandemic. So anything related to student needs, we've seen some learning loss, getting kids to catch up, even though we've been pretty fortunate to be on site most of the time, we've still got, you know, our gap has widened. Or anything with infrastructure, indoor air quality, some of those things become glaringly obvious. Then the third round, we don't have information on that, but looking at the bill that just passed the Senate, assuming that makes it through and gets signed into law, round two was fifty-four billion dollars for K twelve funding. This third round, if it passes, would be a hundred and twenty-six billion. So with this round, we're getting about two hundred and twelve thousand. We can probably expect double that or a little more for round three. And it's my understanding the timeframe will be the same. So we know we've got about two hundred and twelve thousand dollars to spend over the next two years. It could be another four hundred on top of that during the next two years. So what do we do with those funds? One thing that's become clear that we need to, if we can have consensus on this, we can move ahead with this, but we used to have a title teacher. I put some stuff in your Friday notes about it, trying to keep you in the loop on this, but we went to a school-wide title program where we didn't have to just target the kids that were struggling. We could use the title funds for everybody. So we incorporated that position into classroom teacher. We can use the funds for everybody. We've reached a point, especially with this pandemic, it's, it's become more clear, like I said, the gap has widened, that kids falling behind and we're not, we're having a hard time addressing those kids, pulling them out, getting them extra help that they need, intervening to keep them out of special ed or to keep them up to speed. So hiring that position back like we had several years ago, whether it's called a reading coach or an intervention teacher, someone to oversee all that, all of the tiered instruction that we have going on, these kids are struggling, we're going to test those kids every other week and intervene and give them the help that they need. Having somebody to oversee that and pull those kids out, especially for the elementary grades, has really become a need. So hiring another teacher, you can figure roughly fifty grand a year for a certified position between salary, payroll taxes, and insurance. So just an even round number. So that would be a two-year deal. After that, we would have to either do away with that position or find a way to keep funding that position. So that's the trick there with doing, hiring a long-term position with short-term money, but it's definitely needed. The other thing, the things that we've talked about are H B A C. We've got a lot of needs. That's, we need to upgrade our control system. We've got rooftop units that need replaced, windows, windows need replaced, all the frames are starting to rot, and a lot of our leak issues in the building are related to the windows, how those windows were remodeled. So those things are also needs, but that's a longer-term project, or those are longer-term projects that we've got time to address those. I would like board consensus, if you guys think it's, it's a go, to hire that additional person, to go ahead and open that position. Obviously, nothing would become formal until you all approve a hire, but give me your feedback on that, or if you have any other questions.
How does that hurt the possibility of another person?
I'll have some information in executive session about specific personnel that might help answer that question, but yeah. To hire an additional position and try to figure out how we fund that, and also fund And that person would not just be for elementary, it'd also be for secondary. But obviously, our, the data that we've looked at for our gaps is the lower grades really stuff, which you can imagine when kids are trying to learn to read at home when they're kindergartners, it's, you need those kids in school. They missed a good chunk of the year.
Is there any data to tell us how long it might take to get the kids turned around as far as what we're seeing? I mean, we think we'd move them off their contract for.
I, I think, I guess I can say this because it was my recommendation to this board that we, that we incorporate that title position into the, into the staff. In hindsight, I think that was a mistake. I wish we would have let that position in place. So I think long-term, it needs to be something that's there. You know, we have some aides that can do that pull out, but you know, they're not, they're not certified teachers, you know, they're, we still have to have a teacher kind of overseeing those things, but if we have a teacher that can oversee it themselves and do the additional instruction, I think long-term, it's, it is needed, but.
Well, and we've got teachers, I spoke with a couple of them, you know, they want to do what's best for the ones that are getting behind, but then that takes time getting, taking away from them working with the rest of the class, so I guess, you know, we have a need, we ought to address it.
Do a lot of other districts around have some doing that position? I think I'm for, I mean, we can't let kids continue to get behind. We've had enough problems this year, but we need to get them caught up.
My question, I guess, is, we're just helping in with the discussions you had about maybe cutting back on some of the classroom parents.
Yeah, we're, we're overstaffed now. We, you know, we had to hire extras for the COVID situation. That doesn't change what we need to do there to get back to our normal number there.
So will, how did we figure in the extra salary for the parents that we got there, and can that be rolled over to help pay for the title person?
We've used some of the coronavirus relief funds to pay for those extra positions.
That's right. Okay, I forgot.
But what you're saying, Josh, is being next to your salary, it begins to be harder to pay for that, and then we'd have to figure it out.
Yeah, we'd have to figure out what to do, whether we can, can afford it at that point, or if, you know, depending on what enrollment does. If enrollment jumps, it might be able to just be worked into the, into the budget, or if there's a need to cut back on other staff to keep that position, or, or if we have to do away with it.
I think it's needed to get the kids caught up. I'm agreeing with the opposite.
Well, we'll, we'll go ahead and advertise for that position then, if that's consensus, and then, like I said, if we have a change of heart, we don't need to move forward with the approving of hires, so.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
I guess, any other thoughts on the infrastructure side of things? I'm thinking windows is kind of the top of the list. Obviously, our H B C.
You're comfortable with the boilers? Everything's okay on that side?
Boilers, yep. Our fan units in the, in the building, you know, they're going to need to be, need some attention here and there, but whole-scale replacement, yeah. Rooftop units, we need to do those anyway. But windows is one of those that I've struggled with, how to find a way to pay for it. Those rooftop units, we can rotate those in. Windows is a big project.
How old are the windows we have? I'm just asking.
I don't know.
I think like.
Because the original building, you know, one classroom would be pretty much all windows, and then at some point, they blocked that in and left two windows, basically either side.
I was thinking sometime in the eighties. That's what I was thinking. I can remember the old ones.
And they don't open. They've since been sealed off because they've leaked and they fall apart when you try to open them. That's before my time, and they were sealed, so we can't open them. They, like today, it'd be seventy-five degrees in the room, and you can't open the window to get some fresh air in.
So get some bids.
Okay. We'll start down that road, and if you have other thoughts of things we need to be looking at, let me know.
Okay. Thank you. Board member activities and reports.
The National Honor Society. Do you believe?
Yeah. It sounded like the ones who were looking for warm weather.
Carl?
No, I don't have any.
Debbie, do you have anything?
Oh, no. I'm meeting next week at eight o'clock in the morning if anybody wants to go for me, since I'm not a morning person. Don't all, don't all volunteer at once. Okay, no, I don't have anything for this time.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Administrator.
Mr. White, his wife had a procedure today, and he's, he wasn't able to make it this evening, so. His report, state assessments are coming up. The window opens April first through the middle of May. We're going to try to have all these done in the month of April. We get into May, and it gets crazy. It's a shorter window this year for some reason, I'm not sure why, but we'll get those in. We didn't get any assessment data from last year because of this shutdown. So we do math and English Language Arts for third through high school, and then science in fifth grade and eighth grade, and I believe in high school. And then social studies, we don't do any of that this year, so. You see the National Honor Society inductees listed there, Kimber Downing, Preston Dunn, Mackenzie Hacker, Edwin Fernandez, Connor Murphy, Dylan Reed, Darby Smith, and Hunter Smith. And Mr. White was going to review the substate basketball. Like Raymond said, I think teams performed well, just came up short. Proud of those kids and coaches for the season. Junior high quiz bowl and high school forensics are going, going on. We host forensics here for the league on April seventh. They're going to do the preliminaries, I'm not sure if that's what you call them, the prelims, or the qualifying events virtually, so that'll cut down on the time needed and the space needed. So we will be dismissing seven through twelve on that day at noon, so we have classrooms and, and space to do, to host this event. Elementary will stay in school all day, so the staff for the seven, twelve will help run that event. So it's our turn to host that. That becomes a challenge with the space, but. For our music contest, they're, a lot of that's going to be virtual. Think spring sports, we're starting up, I think track got this start today, high school track. I'm not sure in junior how track starts. We're all gearing up with golf, too, here right around spring break time. Prom is scheduled for April tenth. We still intend to do that in the gym. We provide some more space, you know, a lot of times we create kind of a smaller room. I think we're going to steer away from that and keep some open space, so kids can stay apart, but we feel good about being able to do that prom on-site, so our kids don't miss another, another event. Junior, senior play is on the calendar as well. We're looking at some data. When I was doing a data review, just wanting to see what was the learning loss like, what were our challenges, we just don't have much data for our seven through twelve. We don't do any national assessments. We do star reading to set their accelerated reader goal, but we do Ames Web kindergarten through sixth grade, and we do the pre-A C T and A C T, but that doesn't give us great data, but we're going to look at adding that Ames Web testing to the upper grades, at least through seventh and eighth grade. So we do have some objective data to look at. Parent-teacher conferences are going on. The student-led conferences for the secondary, they've scheduled those with their L S T teachers. We did offer the option for virtual or phone conferences. We have a handful still doing that. We may even offer that into the future. We want, we want the parents to be here. We want that, that relationship, but if we've got some that we just can't get in, offering them that, if we can at least have a chance to talk to them, even if it's on the phone or on Zoom, I think that's a positive, so we're, we're talking about. Does it make sense to allow that even in, in future years? Doing the pre-enrollment, choosing their classes at the secondary level. We're talking about a transition day for sixth graders moving into seventh grade. They're either doing something this spring or probably more likely next fall. These kids have some anxiety, and sometimes the parents have some anxiety about kids making that jump. We're also looking at something for fourth graders coming into fifth grade, but we'll probably do something like that during the school day, maybe this spring, so they kind of get a look at how things are going to be different next year for them. And on my report, dyslexia, we need to, we've got some requirements for training. We've done some of that already. We're going to do more in April. We do have to screen at every grade level, fall, winter, and spring, on the reading comprehension. If there's red flags, we need to further assess for dyslexia. That's probably something we've not done a good job of, the schools in the state, so hoping to improve those efforts and not letting kids slip through the cracks there. I already went over this as far as Mr. White's report on the Ames Web and the pre-A C T, the additional assessments there. Math curriculum resources, I'd hoped to have a decision ready to go this month. That's not going to happen. We don't, we don't have our decision made on that. We've narrowed it down to four different programs. This is for our secondary level math. Already covered the state assessments. Budget update after our audit, things haven't changed a whole lot. Since we base our, since we base our budget for the current year off of last year's enrollment or prior year, we kind of know where we're at. So we got the choice, do we pick, do we use three fourteen and a half or three twelve and a half? We use the bigger one. And then the weightings are on the current year, so adding for bilingual students and transportation and at-risk and those things, that's based on the current year. So if we increase enrollment next year, the current year weightings might increase, so we know that we'll leave, we'll be using this three twelve and a half number for our enrollment, but if our enrollment increases next year, we could see a little bit of a bump with the, with the weightings. So this isn't very far off of where I anticipated. General fund's a little bit lower, L O V's a little bit higher. So we're anticipating about eighty-two thousand more this year. That's right where we landed. So that has all been incorporated in the additional salaries.
So that has all been incorporated in, uh, additional salaries and, and shots. Legislative update, I've, uh, I've kind of been out of touch on this, but there's a lot of things happening that are a little unsettling with, with vouchers and, uh, under the name of school choice, we don't, our kids don't have a lot of choice here. So some of those, a lot of it is a tax credit scholarship where I can donate money to a scholarship-granting organization and a kid could use that as funds to go to a private school that does not have any accountability, they don't have to accept special ed students, they don't, they're not, they don't have the same requirement as public schools, may not be good for all kids. So that's a lot of what's happening in our legislature this year related to school finance. We've had our crisis drills ongoing. We've got one more fire drill. We're through our tornado drills. We've got one more crisis drill to do. And when we're done with those, it's a lot more manageable this year than that crazy mess we had the last couple of years. We did have the drug dog in last week. It was a, a pretty good event. Things went okay, so happy to report no, no drugs were found. So that's going to be an ongoing thing. Chief Adams is readily accessible and happily bring Glenn into the building anytime, so.
How long did it take?
Uh, thirty minutes, less than thirty minutes. So we didn't do the parking lot, but we may have him come up on a weekend or an evening to search some areas that maybe off the beaten path, somebody might hide something somewhere that we wouldn't typically search during the school day. Takes some more time.
You took him through the high school lounge, the junior high?
Yes. And the locker rooms. The difference with the Providence company, the private company we were working with before, they're working under our, our direction. They're not law enforcement officers. So when we involve law enforcement, that becomes more strict procedurally because of the Fourth Amendment and illegal searches. So the kids need to stay in the classroom. The kid, the dog can't search a student, you know, and it has to be random search of where we're going. So it becomes a challenge. We don't want to lock the kids in the classroom for two hours while we search the entire building, so need to be more purposeful about, about how we go about that, but, but it's, it's definitely a positive. We appreciate St. John Police Department. Still working on the daycare situation. I don't have any movement on that, just kind of an idea, collecting information, generating ideas, but it's still on the, on the back runners, maybe a possibility. Strategic planning, we've had this on, on the agenda. Is this something we want to look at doing later in the spring, this summer? So that would be as a reminder, hiring somebody like K A S B to come in, collect community volunteers, uh, school representatives, students, school board members, looking at the future of our school district and where do we want to be in ten years, in twenty years?
What kind of cost is there for K A S B to be able to do that?
I don't know the answer to that. I'd have to find that out.
The one nice thing that, I guess the thing that'd be nice to know in advance is where like the core barrier situation is going to land that, because that affects so much in our communities that we can strategically plan and then have it all thrown out the window by one thing.
Well, how about I'll give some more information for you on cost and potential for that and get back with you. If that works. And that's all I have for my report.
All right. Thank you. All right, executive session.
Yeah, uh, thirty minutes. I think we'll definitely need that.
Mr. President, I move that the board go into executive session to discuss the performance and qualifications of specific employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under K O M A with Mr. Meyer to be included and that we return to open session at eight oh six in this room. Second.
It's been moved in second and that we go into executive session, discuss the performance and qualifications of specific employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under K O M A with Mr. Meyer to be included and that we return to open session at eight oh six in this room. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Okay, to call the meeting back to order. Closing business items, resignations or contracts.
I have a resignation letter here from Mr. Mandarino, resigning his position as a teacher and student co-sponsor effective at the end of the contract year. Recommend the board approve that resignation letter.
I move that we accept that resignation. Second.
It's been moved in second and that we accept Mr. Mandarino's resignation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carried.
Future agenda.
We'll look at our handbook, report on the foundation. I believe we can get that information together. Our capital improvements plan, we'll look at that, but our vehicle information will be part of that, any summer maintenance projects. And we certify the board vacancies we've got. I don't remember who's coming up. A vacancy here in twenty twenty-two. I'll get you that information on Friday note. Then supplemental contracts, we'll review those for approval in May.
All right. Thank you. Motion adjourned.
So who?
Third.
Okay, it's been moved in second and we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Post same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.